Good evening, I'd like to call the March 11th, 2024 meeting of the Dare County Board of Education to order. We're meeting at the Dare County Administrative Building in Manio and the time is 5:00 PM. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment of silence. Next, I'd like to recognize our commissioners that are out on the floor tonight. It looks like we have Ms. Bassnight. Ms. Bassnight, thank you and the other commissioners for all your support and the dedication y'all put in, not only in Dare County but in Dare County Schools. Thanks again for coming tonight. I'll turn the meeting over to Ms. Bothwell to provide their official welcome on behalf of the board.
Welcome. It's great to have so many of you here today, especially Keith. I can't wait for the presentation. And the staff members, I always appreciate seeing all of you. It's very helpful. And Isabella will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our first order of business this evening is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion on the floor to approve our agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
A motion by Mr. Payne, second by Ms. Bothwell. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Rachel, I'll turn it over to you for our public comments.
The Dare County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled meetings. The public comment period is open for members of the public, including parents and students, to voice compliments, concerns, complaints about personnel, implementation of board policy, the quality of the education program, or school facilities. According to Policy 2340, presentations are limited to a maximum of three minutes. Obscene, vulgar, or profane statements, personal attacks, and insults in statements that are disruptive to the orderly operation of the meeting will not be permitted. We have only one public comment this evening that was signed up, and this is Ms. Marion Midget. And Ms. Midget, I've handed out your documents that you wanted. Let me know when you're ready, Ms. Midget. I'll start your time.
Good evening. I'm Marion Midget, representing the League of Women Voters in Dare County. I'm here to present 2024 Citizens Guide for Guide to Community Services. Complimentary copies of the guide, published by the League in 1988, are distributed annually to government and business offices throughout Dare County. It contains contact information for local, state, and national governmental agencies, voting information, emergency numbers, and a great deal more. Our guide is published under the auspices of the state League of Women Voters Citizen Education Foundation.
Okay. On the back cover, you'll find acknowledgement of the municipalities and local businesses that donated generously toward our publication expenses. Thank you, and thanks to your staff members for helping us update this information for this year's version. League members are now distributing 6,800 copies of the guide from Duck to Hatteras Village, Roanoke Island, and Mainland Dare. You'll find them in libraries, post offices, the MOM Center, Virginia Tillet Center, and Fessenden Centers, as well as town and county offices. They'll be all around by maybe tomorrow. They might be out there now. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Publishing this guide is part of our continued commitment to provide pertinent information to voters. Membership in the League is open to anyone of voting age, male or female. Students 16 and older may join free, and new members are always welcome. Thank you for your support. We know you'll find this guide helpful. Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Hitch. We'll move on to announcements and recognition. I'd like to update everyone about our school visits. The donuts and coffees are being available to our staff as we arrive to meet and greet. It's been a very positive visits with our school. The staff is connecting, giving us ideas, communicating with the board members as we just walk through the visit, other schools' facilities. We currently have done two of our schools moving forward throughout, between now and June, would be throughout the whole school district. And tonight, you'll see Ms. Bothwell and Ms. Ballance give an update on two of the schools that we visit and go from there. So, like I said, it's been a very pleasant opportunity for us board members to go out and visit our schools and see the feedback from the students, I mean, from the staff. So, with that being said, I'd turn it over to Mr. Bassnight for some additional announcements.
Thank you, sir. I want to start off tonight with some recognition. Dare County Schools has received national recognition as a National Board Accomplished District. Our district received this prestigious recognition as a result of having over 30% of our teachers and counselors achieve National Board Professional Teaching Standards certification. Dare County Schools currently ranks in the top 14 districts in the nation having this certification. National Board Certification is a highly respected, prestigious certification for pre-K-12 grade teachers and counselors that exemplifies teaching expertise through an extremely rigorous performance-based, peer-reviewed assessment, and is widely recognized as one of the most respected professional certifications for pre-K-12 education. To achieve this certification, educators must showcase a profound understanding of students, content knowledge, adept use of data and assessments, teaching practice, and active participation in learning communities, supported by evidence of continuous reflection and learning. Not only is this recognition a testament to the six educators who achieved their National Boards this year, the 12 teachers who renewed their certification, and the other 59 educators who hold this certification, but also to the list of Dare County educators who have devoted their time and energy behind the scenes to assist others in achieving this certification. The board and I would like to very much recognize everyone that's achieved National Board Recognition in Dare County Schools.
Next, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recognize Director of Career and Technical Education Programs, Dr. Shannon Castillo, who is coming to share some exciting information and news about our First Flight High School Junior Chefs.
Thank you. Can I have Kalida come up too?
Yes, ma'am.
So, some exciting news. So, First Flight High School is one of three teams in the state that is going to be competing in the 2024 North Carolina Junior Chef Competition. They are competing as finalists in the statewide cook-off, and they're up against two pretty big schools. They are up against Guerinter High School out of Charlotte Mecklenburg, and they're also up against Northern High, which is Durham Public Schools. So, our First Flight High School students are in the top three in the state. The teams of students, they were challenged to work with the adult team supervisor and a school nutrition administrator, Kalida. They had to create a recipe for school lunch entree, for a school lunch entree. The recipes had to meet the National School Lunch Program guidelines, nutrition standards, and include at least two North Carolina grown products and one USDA food item, which could then be replicated in school nutrition programs and appeal to student tastes. So, based on the review of applications and recipes submitted, culinary teacher Chef Stansky from First Flight High School has a team of Abby Morales, Cooper Hill, Ambry Meekins, and Tim Eline. They were selected to advance to the cook-off phase of the competition. They have final interviews this week, and then on Wednesday, the winner is announced in a live watch party. So, we wish them the best of luck. Do you have any questions about it?
We can't send it out because it's private until they actually...
They're having the watch party at First Flight High School at 10:00 on Wednesday. Wednesday at 10:00 AM. Yep, upstairs, right off the rotunda. So, we wish them the best.
Yes, wish them the best.
And thank you to Kalida and her team to help and make that happen.
Thank you, Kalida.
Another team competing for a state championship in Dare County Schools. Gotta love that.
Gotta love it.
Gotta love that. Next, I want to talk a little bit about the North Carolina Science Olympiad Tournament. Recently, Dare County Schools had two schools competing in the North Carolina Science Olympiad Regional Tournament, Cape Hatteras Secondary and Cape Hatteras Elementary Schools, and they did very well. In their competition on February 17th, Cape Hatteras Secondary School had four teams finish in the top three, and math teacher and head coach Jessica Polk received the Coach of the Year Award for her exceptional leadership and guidance. On March 2nd, in their competition, Cape Hatteras Elementary School earned 22 first-place medals, 14 second-place medals, and the team won first place overall in Division A. Coach Jen Augusten won the Coach's Award, and the team was recognized as the Conan Morgan Spirit Award winners for showing kindness and sportsmanship. The North Carolina Science Olympiad is an NC State program with a mission to attract and retain a pool of K-12 students entering STEM-focused, that's science, technology, engineering, mathematics, degrees, and careers in North Carolina. These tournaments consist of a series of different hands-on, interactive, challenging, and inquiry-based events from the fields of biology, earth science, environmental science, chemistry, physics, engineering, and technology. Round of applause for both of those teams. And, Mr. Chairman, before I turn it over to Mr. Holly to talk a little bit about the Working Condition Survey, there is one other item I'd like to take privilege and recognize. We had intended to invite one of our teams here tonight for recognition, and they couldn't make it tonight, but we're going to do that in the future, and I'll explain why. The Manio Middle School men's basketball team recently held their awards banquet at the Virginia Tillet Center just over here behind us. I want to congratulate these young men and their coaches for an outstanding, undefeated season. They would have been here tonight, but I believe eight of them are actually on the baseball team at the same time, so we were not going to interrupt that one. The Board of Education plans to have them at a meeting in the near future to personally say thank you. I do want to talk about them for a moment tonight, even without them being here. I want to share with each of you what I had the pleasure of watching the other night at their banquet. During the award ceremony, individual players were selected to speak for their grade-level teammates. As each of them rose and approached the podium, they individually went and shook the hand of their coaches. They stepped up to the podium and gave thoughtful, personal speeches highlighting their team, their coaches, their parents, supporters, and their teammates. Even though this banquet was a celebration of their accomplishments on the court, that night, that moment, the speeches, and the young men far outshined even an undefeated season. And I just wanted to say, congratulations, gentlemen. Well done. Director of Human Resources, Mr. Oliver Holly, is going to come up and give us an update on the North Carolina Teacher Working Condition Survey.
Good afternoon, and I think I need to click. Good afternoon, Superintendent, Board members, and all of our guests in attendance here and everyone that's online. I think that I have the proper clicker. And, Ms. Holly King, if there's something I need to do, please let me know.
Oliver, is there a clicker on the podium?
She just gave me the clicker. There we go. I just hit the button from Black Star. Board, as I was stating today, I'm before you. Apologize, I'm a little stuffy, but we are going to discuss the 2024 North Carolina Teacher Working Condition Survey. This is a survey that goes out, actually want to give you a little bit of history of the survey. As you can see here on the screen above, in 1999, the state of North Carolina launched the Governor's Working Condition Initiative. That information was started and actually moved into the year of 2020, where it actually was pushed out. It was a 39-question questionnaire that was, if you were in education then, it was paper and pencil. What is amazing is looking at the beginning of this to where we started with a 39-question survey, to where we were on the last survey, it was almost 200 questions. And this new survey has been improved and simplified to a grand total of 99 questions. So, maybe 39 to 199 to now 99, maybe we'll get it back down. But one of the things that is important about this survey this time around, and letting everyone know from the beginning, is North Carolina, actually, when we rolled this out and Governor easily took it upon his administration to push it out, North Carolina was the very first state to take time to look at the people that make our schools work, the teachers, and to get that information from them and use it as we begin planning. And so, as you'll see in the information that I'm going to share with you tonight, the survey this year, they've dedicated a whole entire website. And so, the big push from NCDPR and our legislators is to get that information so that they can use it as they move forth with educational bills, educational incentives, and just downright listening to the teachers in the classroom. The survey opened on March 1st, and it runs all month long until the 31st. And what happens this year that's a little bit different, for those of you that were in schools or know anything about being in the school at that time of the physical building, I know you know about schools, but the physical building, there used to be one person who was the keeper of the codes. That person was almost like the wizard, and you had to go to them and ask, please, can you give me another code? And if that person was someone that wanted to kind of, you know, be that type of person, it was kind of scary to go ask for another code. But what the state has done this time around, they actually sent them out anonymously. So, all teachers, and this is certified teachers, and support staff members, principals do not take this survey, directors do not take this survey, district personnel that's not in the classroom do not take it. I will tell you on a later slide that the state is actually looking at developing one for administrators, and that information be solely for administrators. So, we're talking about now, your licensed teachers and certified staff, your social workers, your counselors, those individuals in your school building. But even with a shorter questionnaire, the state decided, let's kind of jazz it up a little bit this year. And so, what they did is they developed a brand-new website. This is the link here. It's an interactive website where you can see real-time data. But we also know that anybody that takes a survey, if you have some type of incentive, it kind of prods you along to kind of make you want to do it. So, once again, it's three steps. The unique anonymous link this year, less questions, and then no rush to be completed. Now, if that wasn't good enough for you, the state decided, let's add prizes to it. And so, everybody likes prizes. So, this year they went out and they got a bunch of corporate donors to come in to provide prizes and incentives to increase the feedback, but also to reward our school system. So, as you see on my slide, a couple of them is Bo Jangles, born right here in North Carolina. Teachers can be entered for a $25 gift card, tickets to the state fair, our North Carolina museums, and sporting events. I don't think ACC tickets are in there for Duke and Carolina fans from the other night, just to bring that up. Go Carolina. But also, for the districts, our districts, so our job, the superintendent's job, is to push and encourage our staff members to get those surveys completed, because every school system or PSU that has a completion rate of over 90% will be entered into one-of-10 drawings for $1,000. And those $1,000 awardees, that money is going to be used to send our teachers to professional development at the 2024 AIM Conference, as you see, that takes place in October of this year. So, as I said, it's an interactive, real-time results on this survey. They update almost every 10 minutes. So, about an hour ago, as I was sitting back there, I poured our state data. So, looking at the 120,000 invites that were sent out right now across the state of North Carolina as of an hour ago, we have 61,000 individuals plus that have completed their surveys. And we're looking at almost a completion rate of 50%, right? Hovering at 51 if we can push it over. But also, I did pull Dare County's data. And before I show that, I want to go back to the keeper of the codes. Thank you, Keeper of the Codes. Because we don't have that keeper of the codes, what the state did is, because it's anonymous, they developed a system that if teacher Bassnight didn't get his code, or he lost it in the spam, you check your spam. If it's not there, there's a secret email that you can send it to to get another code. That code does not allow you to vote twice, three, four, or five times. It's only going to allow you to get that one entry. So, with that, I did print and pull Dare County School. So, amazingly, we have three schools right now that have a 100% rate of completion. So, I want to give those schools a big shout-out. Also, if you look at this data, you'll see a couple of them that are hovering there. Now, we do have some that are not at the 100 mark, they're not at the 70 mark, but the reason I told you, there were some issues with folks getting codes. And so, they've emailed the state to get those codes. So, when we start looking at our newer data and hopefully pulling it by the end of the week, we will have additionally more schools outside of our three with 100% or over the 90% principals and administrators moving forward. Board, Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, and Boss Lady Sellers, that is the report on the Teacher Working Condition Survey. Any questions?
Any questions from the board members?
Thank you so much, and I'm glad the schools are jumping up and completing that survey, because it's very important for us to know the feedback, what they see each and every day, for us to make our decision-making.
Yes, sir. And one last thing, our principals, I've been privy to a couple of the reminder emails. So, each one of the principals at the school site, they're reminding them in their weekly updates and just, you know, making sure that we get this information in. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bassnight?
Minister, that's all I have.
Ms. Isabella?
Our student.
All right. So, obviously, we have two students who are not here to say anything. Both of those students are student athletes. I think we have these guys, because I don't know if you guys are aware of the fact that we're pricing red.
Really? I'm shocked on that.
This morning.
Yeah, I'm going to read the question queue, and then I'm going to try to pay you back.
Sure, it'll be fine.
All right. So, starting with Kitty Hawk Elementary School. Kitty Hawk Elementary School celebrated Read Across America Week last week by inviting guest readers to the school, including older siblings, parents, community members, and the First Flight High School baseball team, Southern Shores Police Chief Cole, First Flight High School band director, First Flight High School principal Joe Tyson, all attended Read Across America Week. Kitty Hawk students loved hearing them read aloud. Kitty Hawk Elementary School Odyssey of the Mind team competed in the Coastal Regional Competition and brought home the third-place trophy. Looking forward, we invite school board members to attend our monthly Global Culture Day, highlighting the traditions of Honduras on March 22nd, presented by Sarah Gonzalez. That was First Flight Elementary. Next, we'll look at First Flight, now, excuse me, that was Kitty Hawk Elementary School. Next, we'll look at First Flight Elementary School. First Flight Elementary celebrated also Read Across America by launching off with their One Book, One School Assembly and giving all students and staff the book Wish Tree by Catherine Applegate. All students and staff are reading assigned chapters each night, and administration is providing comprehension questions each morning that students answer and turn in to win a prize. The week of March 4th is the Spring Book Fair, and they hope to have Daily Spirit Days to encourage reading. March 7th was First Flight Elementary School Literacy Night. Families were invited to come and learn strategies and games from the teachers to support the science of reading and activities families can do at home to support their child's reading growth. Students who came earned a game to help them support their reading at home. And then, on March 5th, the North Carolina Symphony came to First Flight Elementary to perform for all grade levels. And again, that was First Flight Elementary School. And then, First Flight High School. Congratulations to the First Flight High School CTE Department for hosting an extraordinary job fair last week. The hard work and dedication paid off, providing opportunities for students and stakeholders, again, as students were seeking employment opportunities. Hats off to all the teachers involved with putting that together. Again, it was a fantastic CTE department opportunity for students to look for employment. And they will host a, the school will host a fantastic course fair this week, again, trying to make a difference as students select courses for the upcoming school year. A special shout-out to the amazing baseball team for their visit to Kitty Hawk Elementary School on Read Across America Day. Again, the First Flight High School baseball team's commitment to community outreach and education is truly inspiring. Keep up that fantastic... Yes, sir. And one last thing, our principals, I've been privy to a couple of the reminder emails, so each one of the principals at the school site, they're reminding them in their weekly updates and just, you know, making sure that we get this information in. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bassnight?
Minister, that's all I have.
Ms. Isabel? Our student?
All right, so obviously, we have two students who are not here to say anything. Both of those students are student athletes. I think we have these guys who are worried about the price of rent.
Really? I'm shocked on that.
This morning. Yeah, I'm gonna read the question queue, and then I'm gonna try to pay the cost.
Sure, it'll be fun.
All right. So starting with Kitty Hawk Elementary School, Kitty Hawk Elementary School celebrated Read Across America Week last week by inviting guest readers to the school, including older siblings, parents, community members, and the First Flight High School baseball team, Southern Shore's Police Chief Cole, First Flight High School band director, First Flight High School principal Joe Tyson, all attended Read Across America Week. Kitty Hawk students loved hearing them read aloud. Kitty Hawk Elementary School Odyssey of the Mind team competed in the Coastal Regional Competition and brought home the third-place trophy. Looking forward, we invite school board members to attend our monthly Global Culture Day, highlighting the traditions of Honduras on March twenty-second, presented by Sarah Gonzalez. That was First Flight Elementary. Next, we'll look at First Flight, now, excuse me, that was Kitty Hawk Elementary School. Next, we'll look at First Flight Elementary School. First Flight Elementary celebrated also Read Across America by launching off with their One Book, One School Assembly and giving all students and staff the book Wish Tree by Catherine Applegate. All students and staff are reading assigned chapters each night, and administration is providing comprehension questions each morning that students answer and turn in to win a prize. The week of March fourth is the Spring Book Fair, and they hope that, to have Daily Spirit Days to encourage reading. March seventh was First Flight Elementary School Literacy Night. Families were invited to come and learn strategies and games from the teachers to support the science of reading and activities families can do at home to support their child's reading growth. Students who came earned a game to help them support their reading at home. And then on March fifth, the North Carolina Symphony came to First Flight Elementary to perform for all grade levels. And again, that was First Flight Elementary School. And then First Flight High School, congratulations to the First Flight High School CTE Department for hosting an extraordinary job fair last week. The hard work and dedication paid off, providing opportunities for students and stakeholders, again, as students were seeking employment opportunities. Hats off to all the teachers involved with putting that together. Again, it was a fantastic CTE department opportunity for students to look for employment. And they will host a, the school will host a fantastic course fair this week, again, trying to make a difference as students select courses for the upcoming school year. A special shout-out to the amazing baseball team for their visit to Kitty Hawk Elementary School on Read Across America Day. Again, the First Flight High School baseball team's commitment to community outreach and education is truly inspiring. Keep up that fantastic work to all the teachers and students at First Flight High School, and good luck to all our athletes during this season.
Mr. Chairman, while she's coming up, I do want to give a shout-out to everyone that came out, the First Flight High School, all the businesses and community members that came out to provide job opportunities for the students. It was a huge turnout, and kids were walking out of there with applications, so that was an outstanding event. Yes, ma'am?
All right, you guys ready for my mouthful?
Go for it. You got it.
We'll start with Mags Elementary School. They held their One School, One Book event with the one and only Ivan Literacy Night on Thursday, March seventh, and it was a success as always. The building was turned into the setting of the stories while parents came through to observe the steam lab created by all grade levels. Each grade level provided a literacy tip that families could use at home with their students. There were treats, and families had the chance to vote on their favorite grade-level decoration. Overall, it was a great event. Secondly, the NHES book fair was a success. And finally, the NHES is partnering with the Coastal Landscaping Initiative and has been selected to host a native garden on campus. The garden will post plants, trees, and shrubs that are native to our area and will be used as a teaching tool for students and community members. Moving on to Manio Elementary School, MES recently celebrated their fourth-grade students' commitment to learning by showcasing them during the annual Living Wax Museum Night. Thirty families came out to the first annual kindergarten readiness pathway night, and the music program went to see the hurrah players in Norfolk and is having a follow-up field trip to the Sandler Center for a fully enriched musical experience. MES staff dedicated to surprise students by transforming the school before the annual One Book, One School rollout assembly. Additionally, this month at MES, staff has created and planned engaging experience through science and STEM for this year's One School, One Book, One School book, which is a Rover's Story. MES will have a mobile planetarium visit, hands-on STEM kits donated by COA, a family telescope night aligned to seeing the moon and Jupiter, plus, they have partnered with NASA to have a scientist come and talk in classrooms. Finally, families are encouraged to join us as we march into Mars together, and our SGA students recently wrote and mailed letters to community leaders to come in and read to classrooms so that we can truly invite them to share the joy that we have for reading. At Manio Middle School, MES, MMS, excuse me, had a successful pop-top assembly with the Shriners. Their pop-tops weighed in at four hundred and twenty-eight pounds. The Save Promise Club is celebrating See Something, Say Something Week. Each day, Save Promise Club is hosting a school-wide activity. Monday started off with Make a Difference Day, Tuesday was Up Standard Day where students signed the Say Something pledge, Wednesday they had Who's With Me photo booth, Thursday were encouraged to send a note to someone they trust in the building, and Friday, they the celebration ends with Unity Day where everyone will wear green. At Manio High School, our seniors went on their senior avid trip, which was a major success. Students navigated their way through Washington, D.C. to prepare to live on their own at college. We were exploring a possible partnership with Bayless Boats to add boat building to our CTE program. Haley Hurd, a member of the National Art Honor Society, or the NAHS, as I'll refer to, refer to it, earned a spot in the NAHS Online Gallery of Excellence. NAHS had a successful fundraiser in selling homemade flowers for Valentine's Day. The Spanish program had ten students earn credit by mastery. Sarah Marshall Gallup and Christian Tovar Calderon won first place in the American Math Contest. We had multiple students play second and third as well in the AMC. Mr. Metzinger has expanded our after-school weight training program to include MMS with over twenty middle-school students in attendance. Caroline Gay has also been accepted into governor's school. At Cape Patteras Elementary School, third, fourth, and fifth-grade students had, at the regional science Olympiad event we spoke about previously. Thank you to coaches, Ms. Kristen Gay, Ms. Tammy Harsh, Ms. Beverly Haggy, and Ms. Jen Augustine for dedicating so much extra time to the students. And also, thanks to Ms. Robin Reynolds for taking a Saturday to make sure our team got to the event and home safely. Way to go to all those students that participated in that event. At Cape Patteras Secondary School, their theater arts class entered and won a national contest and will become the first school in North Carolina to produce Harry Potter and the Cursed Child High School Edition through a contest by Broadway Licensing Global. The show will be open in November twenty-twenty-four. Next, three high school students, Emma Riggs, Ann Lord, and Kristen Benet, won third place for their community-giving project in the statewide DECA competition in Greensboro. Students will be traveling in April to compete in the International DECA Competition in California. And finally, the Cape Patteras Secondary School Science Olympiad Team competed in the regional competition and placed in all categories against many teams as we spoke about before. And finally, for Cape Patteras Secondary School, Ms. Jessica Polk was named the Coach of the Year. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Bella, can you, you're the only one here, so I have to, you have to step back up there again. I have a question for you.
You always do this to me.
Is there anything else you want to tell us, like something special that happened to you recently that has something to do with your future?
Yes, I know what you're talking about.
What, what, what is it? What do you want to tell us?
I'm going to Duke University.
Congratulations.
And a full ride at that.
That's awesome.
That's even better.
That's awesome. See, it's not always embarrassing.
Thank you, Isabel. We'll take a short recess, and we'll be back in five minutes.
... is a little different. It is, it's a, it's a different way of understanding things than the way they go on. So just being able to have that time to talk things through, and something that doesn't make sense to me when Steve explains it, or Mr. Blackstocker, or somebody else on the staff explains it, and it clicks, it's kind of like, okay, now I get it, now I get it. So I just wanted to say, I really appreciate the time by the central office to go through that, and Rachel's time in helping us understand that. It's made us, I think, a lot more confident in passing the policies that we are passing, that it is really doing what it's intended to do. So I just want to say that. Thank you. You ready? Okay. So we've, I, we went to Cape Patteras Secondary School last week, and it was just, it's, it's so good to be back in the schools. You know, since COVID, the board has really not been able to really be in the schools like we used to be. And so David had decided we, we would do these doughnut breakfasts for the teachers, and it's so, to see them come in and see us standing there with all these Dunkin' Donuts, and they're like, wow, doughnuts! So it's been really fun to get to see the teachers again and be back in the schools and the, and the interaction between the teachers and the administrators and the students has been really wonderful. When we went, we got to walk around and talk to a bunch of the teachers, but one teacher who is very special and near and dear to my heart, because he's just done so much more for the kids at Cape Patteras than just teach them, he's taught them not just to be students, but to be productive and responsible citizens. I am a little partial because he was, came to Cape Patteras the first year my son was there as a freshman, and created a bond with the baseball team that I just would, very, very special. So he has taken over the carpentry department at Cape Patteras and has started this project with help from several people throughout the district. But Keith Durham, would you please come up? And he's going to give us a little presentation. David and Susan and I got to see this bus in operation, and it's very unique, it's very different, and it's very exciting. So Keith?
Mr. Durham, before you start, I also like to recognize we have Mr. Chal, Mr. Alex back there, our transportation director, so, and Ms. Shannon also a big part of this, this workshop. So thank y'all for coming out tonight.
Alex, do you want to come?
Come on up, movie star.
Okay, one, on the board visits, you know, doughnuts and coffee make everybody happy. So, you know, it's, but thank you for, thank you for coming out and...
And Rachel, in case you can't tell, he's from Johnston County.
Thank you for inviting me and just giving me a chance to go through this with you. Thank you for everything you do to support us on the school level. So if I just, okay, here we go. Yeah, all right. Here's our slideshow, get on the bus. We were very fortunate to, after I took over the carpentry program, after the untimely passing of Mr. Alvin Hooper, Ms. Rooks and I had started talking about some possibilities of doing more than just the shed that we would annually build. And it first started off as talking about a tiny house, and then we kind of, it kind of grew from there. And Suzanne, who's our building-level CTE coordinator, came to me and said, Shannon's got something really interesting to talk to you about. And, you know, she came, came to me with this idea of, hey, would you like to take a retired bus and try to turn it into an RV, or what they call a schoolie? And so, yeah, why not? Let's roll with it. So last summer, Mr. Chandler, you know, delivered the bus to us and turned the keys over to me. And it looked just like a normal bus on the inside. The county had not done anything, the bus garage guys had not prepped it for us, they did service it and brought it down, it's in top-running condition, but we did have a lot to do. You know, we started out, taking out the overhead rails, the seats, the AC units. Now, the bus garage guys did come down and pull those out, so we weren't just cutting freon hoses and all that. So they were a great help with the, the AC and heat removal. The kids learned a lot just in the demo phase. And demo in an activity bus in August and September is, they learn to appreciate the value of air conditioning and stuff like that. But they also learned the fact that, you know, these things are built to stay together. And it was a lot of fun watching them working through that process of figuring out how to get to this, because the way they're put together, you can't get to all the bolts to remove the seats, so you have to come up, you have to figure it out. And that's what this whole project's been about, figuring it out, figure out a way to do it. We did upcycle as much material as we could, the rails became shelves in a garage. You know, we got real ambitious, they started ripping the ceiling out before we were done with the seats, but they were excited, still are. We're on to a second semester group working on it now. We got it cleaned out, and it feels big when you take all the seats out until you start figuring out where everything's going to go in two hundred square feet, and then it starts shrinking again. We did all the seats that were salvageable, we cleaned them up, carpentry classes built some frames to put them together, and a lot of our classrooms now have bus seats in them as additional seating. And we're also doing some for the four-year of the school that'll have custom-made covers on them. A lot of help from the apparel classes and the art classes on those as well. This group worked really hard this fall, and... This group worked really hard this fall, and, you know, again, the guys from the bus garage came and helped out with the AC units, pulled all the insulation out, everything out of the top. And this was basically, we had it down as far as we were willing to take it at this point. The floor is in very good condition, Alex and I both, we walked on it, and I'm not a small guy, so when I could walk all around it and there's no soft spots, I felt pretty confident in what we had. But we got a chance to let the students do some architectural drawings, some floor plans. They tried to figure out where to put everything, got to draw, go through, so we taped it off a couple of times so that they could understand the spatial awareness of where, you know, where everything needs to go. And, and I guess one of the things about this whole project is, it's not just carpentry. This has, this has covered so many different things and continues to, and as we keep moving through this project, we're real excited about it. You know, we did caulk the holes, the seat holes, top and bottom, to make sure we were watertight, because you know you don't drive through water on Hatteras Island. And this, actually, I forgot to update this slide, because we are past this point now. This was when we did the presentation in November up at the NARSA conference. But we got our subfloor in, and the bottom plate on our walls framed out around the wheel wells, and some of these students, they were actually coming down during their lunch break, during our morning break, when a lot of their friends are just hanging out and working on the bus. And that's how you know you got something, you got something good going, when you got kids giving up their own time to get in there and, and keep working at it. Started framing up the closets, they decided we wanted to put a closet in a mechanical room over the wheel wells, and began to see the challenges of framing against a curved ceiling. So, just a lot of, a lot of interesting stuff. You know, there's our closets framed out, and started putting back a little insulation, and then putting some interior walls in the closets. So, you know, what's next with this? Just design decisions, and we're, we've reached that point now. Really, the next thing for us, we've got to make the final decision on where our water and our electrical's going to go, and we've got to start pulling pipe and pulling wire, and then we'll get to the point where we can start doing some more framing, building out some cabinets, things like that. And the great thing, you know, we're not going to Lowe's to pick this stuff up, nothing wrong with that, I love going to Lowe's, but because it's such a custom project, they're having to do it from the ground up, and they're having to build it from point zero to the finished product. So, we're, we're very excited about what we've done and about where this is going, and our target is to have it finished by June 25. So, we're approaching it as a two-year project, and hopefully, we're going to be able to hit that target and get this thing on the road somewhere to someone. And again, the special thanks to everybody that's been involved with this from the school, school and community level, all the way up through the, the board and Derrick County Schools and superintendent.
And where are you getting, like, you're getting, where are you getting the materials from?
Well, wherever we can. We had, we had one local cabinet maker donate a countertop and sink to us, that there was nothing wrong with it, but the homeowner wanted it replaced. So, we're getting donations where we can. We are using some of our local budget that we would normally use for the shed build that we used to do to purchase, purchase materials. You know, Dr. Castillo had told me, she promised me anything we needed that the county would buy.
He's trying to throw you under the bus.
No, we're, we're, we're looking at different options. Also, we've had some, we've had some community groups, Derrick County, I mean, Outer Banks Home Builders Association, when we met them at the GoPro, I met with them at the GoPro thing at COA last year, and they were very excited about it and wanted to get on board. So, you know, yes, there's going to be some large-cost items that have to happen. We're, we want to put a solar array on top of it, so we'll have to have solar panels and the inverter for that. We want to put RV AC unit on the top, because the AC units that were in it only work when the bus is running. So, we want this to be a true RV tiny home for someone so that you don't have to be going down the road for the air conditioner to work. You know, we're looking at doing a plumbed bathroom with shower and sink, but likely a composting toilet, so we don't have to have black water, black water tank, just a gray water tank for the, for the shower and the sink. But all of those are things, you know, we'll need a, we're looking at on-demand hot water heater, a small one for it, for the shower. We'll also probably figure out a weight amount of generator underneath it, or at least store it underneath in some of the storage areas. But there are a lot of things we still have to do, and a lot of things we have to figure out for the students and for myself as well. But, you know, it's, it's been an adventure so far, and we've really enjoyed it, and we're learning a lot as we go.
Well, I would say that, I would argue that they don't just want to miss their free time to work on the bus. I'm sure they love learning from you. But I'm biased.
Any other board member have any questions? Keith?
So, you're going to sell it when it's done, right? Yes, the plan, like we said, this kind of replaced, to a, a much greater level, replaced our annual shed project, which was our fundraiser in the carpentry department. So, when we're done, we will be, we will be auctioning it off like we did the shed, and, you know, at that point, Mr. Chandler and I will have to reach some sort of agreement, because he didn't just gift us this bus. I think, I think the keys, the keys came with some strings attached.
Who's holding the title?
You know, when, when the time comes, the county will be reimbursed for the value of the, of the retired activity bus. Now, it's 20 years old, it's a 2005 model, but it is in, it is in good working condition.
Yeah, I'm asking who's holding the title, and David's like, we do, we do. You're, you're, you know, prior to transportation guy over here. Thank you for that, that, it's, it's exciting.
Keith, after our visit the other day with Marilyn and Susan, I got on the phone with Carolina Thomas. Carolina Thomas, by the way, is our representative that sells buses throughout the state of North Carolina, and that particular bus was purchased from Carolina Thomas, and those who may or may not know, they build their buses in High Point, North Carolina. So, everything is done by machine, and when we were talking about how strong that particular bus, as all of them are, you wanted to really see how it was built. So, I've also talked with Alex, we're in communication with Carolina Thomas, and Thomas built buses to provide you a field trip, hopefully, this coming fall to High Point, to share with your, with you and your students of how a bus is being built for the safety of our students throughout North Carolina.
Thank you very much. That'll be a wonderful trip, and, and will also help them kind of connect the dots on why this thing was so hard to disassemble.
Well, our second year on the board, I took, I was, had the pleasure of taking the board to a tour. Ms. Bassnight was on there as well as Ms. Balance, and they had to say, when they left that facility, they were very shocked as well, of all the work and how safe those, those buses. I mean, that's why it's called the safest way to and from school.
No question about it.
So, thanks again.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Keith, I want to thank you. You, you've, you've taken education and done everything that I would ever dream it would be, because you've taken it out of a classroom, and you've made it real, and if you said it once, you've said it several times. You're not looking at what the problem is, you're figuring out how to do it, and that's got to be the best education that anybody can provide for anyone. You don't look at the problems, you figure out the solutions, and I want to thank you for setting that example for those kids.
Thank you, sir. I also want to thank Ms. Hannah Nash, who came down and shot the video, if you've seen the Facebook video, that she did a tremendous job with that, and the kids did as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
Next, I'll turn it over to Ms. Bothwell.
Last Friday, David and Mary Ellen and I, we went to Kitty Hawk Elementary School to pass out Dunkin' Donuts. A lot of their teachers don't go in the teacher lounge right away in the morning, so Dr. Colvin suggested we walk around, so we put all the little boxes of, isn't this working? Hello?
There you go.
Okay, sorry about that. So, we put all the donuts on a big tray, and we pushed it around, and we went into all the classrooms, and the teachers were pretty excited, the kids were not. They wondered why they weren't getting donuts, they thought it was not too fair, but some of the teachers were real good about it, it's our turn to have something special. So, it was a really, really fun day, and I'm glad that we get out and see what's going on in the schools. I think it's important, I think the staff really, really appreciates it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next, I'll turn the floor back over to Mr. Bassnight for recognitions.
District accreditation?
District accreditation, yes, sir.
Okay. I'll make this very brief forward, I appreciate the recognition to do this. When I first took over, we had a conversation about district accreditation. We've been in communication now for about a year with the Department of Public Instruction, and it is our understanding that the department is moving in a direction where going outside and getting that accreditation may not become necessary. We'll be looking for some developments in, in the short session this spring as to how the department is planning on taking care of that within the state. The, at that time, I'll provide you with some more detailed information about the cost of accreditation and what we've done in the past, plus hopefully what the states, the direction they're taking this spring. Just wanted to give you an update.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll turn the floor over to Ms. Fallon, she's going to review the timeline for the selection of our student advisory for the school year 2024-2025.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, it's that time of year again, we've enjoyed our first year with our student advisors, and I think we hit, hit it out of the ballpark on our first round, and so I'm excited about the second time. Yeah. So, I just wanted to share the timeline with you, so if we can get that up. Okay. So, so again, just to remind to everybody out there, what do our student board members of, provide student voice, a student perspective, and it's a great opportunity for students. I'm hoping that some of our students will be able to join you in your visits this spring around those campuses, I've shared those dates with them. Just a reminder to the public, our criteria, 11th graders, who are getting ready to transition to their senior year, one representative per high school, overall, grade point average of 3.0, and some area of demonstrated leadership. I think we have a very well-rounded group this year, and I feel confident that we'll get that again, and we ask that the students give us names for two staff recommenders, and I will send those recommenders a survey, so they don't have to get a letter of recommendation or anything like that. Well, so, here's what the timeline looks like, we're going to go ahead and, with your approval, I suppose we'll open that application tomorrow. Of course, we're going to advertise on Facebook, social media, at the schools, and then we'll directly send something to both parents and students through their email and other accounts that we have, so that they know that this opportunity is there. That window will be open for about a month, March 12 through April 8, and then in that next time period, that'll give us time to collect those teacher recommendations and set up our interviews, as we enter, the board interviews the candidates, and then make a selection. So, we'll have them about March to May to do that. What I'd like to see is that we do some sort of farewell for our current members at the May 13 meeting, and then select our new members, and then swear our new members in at that June 10 meeting, June, so that anything we do this summer, our new members can join us as we do that.
Thank you. Any, any questions for that timeframe? Everybody good with what's being presented to us tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much.
Do we need to make a motion? I don't think we need to make a motion, do we?
I don't think you do.
No, okay.
No.
Anyway, that's the plan, so we'll, we'll get that out there tomorrow.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. Currently, we have no unfinished business, so we're going to go to new business, and I'll turn that over to Ms. Hitch.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity, Ms. Balance, to participate with the policy committee group, I've enjoyed that too, and I think that helps streamline things for the board and get a deeper understanding on policies. So, to that end, we have some policies for you tonight, these are policies for first reading. The first one is the school nutrition services. All of these policies that, that I've brought to you tonight have been vetted by the policy committee, so we made some revisions, and you'll see them there to the school nutrition services policy, and those are intended to keep up with the school board association recommendations, and a new statutory requirement that talks about administrative penalties on unpaid meal charges, so that's what that one's there for. Do you want me to do them one at a time like that?
That'd be fun.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be, yeah.
Keep, go through the rest of the policies? Okay. The next policy is on school safety, and we updated that for recommendations from the school board associations, and knock on wood, we removed the temporary COVID restrictions that were in there. The next one is the revised policy 4100, it had to do with age requirements for initial entry. We built some things in there that, that gave some help for guidance for military families that might be moving around. The next policy had to do with assignment to classes, and that was updated for some new language due to a new statute, and also through school board association recommendations. Then we updated your policy development policy, and in light of that recommendation, it meant that we rescinded, or we're recommending that you rescind 2400, 2415, 2420, and then 8360 was going to be rescinded as a result of a policy you adopted last month, and we're just trying to streamline them so people don't have to go so many places to get similar information.
Sure. Thank you. This is just the first reading, so we'll be back next month for the second reading and for the approval of the board then, okay?
Sure.
So, we'll, last but not least, we'll turn it over to Mr. Blackstock. I understand he has some exciting news for us tonight.
Of course it is, it's the school calendar.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying.
That's why we're all here. I'm pleased to present to the board a proposed school calendar for the 2425 academic school year. We got input from, through our superintendent advisory committee, from our parent advisory committee, the student advisory, classified employees, certified employees and administrators, two different times. We met in October to critique our current calendar, to look for suggestions on what we might want to do in the next year, and ask questions about that. We met with all of those and then created a calendar based on that input, presented that to each of those committees again in February, and got thumbs up all the way around, so we're, we're presenting a calendar here that has broad approval from all of our stakeholder groups. For each of those meetings, though, I always go through those rules that we have to follow, and I think, and I'll do it quickly, if it's too fast, tell me to stop, but I'm just going to kind of go through to remind everybody what the parameters are. You can't request an educational purpose waiver, we can't go to the legislature and say, hey, we want to start earlier or go later because educational reasons, they're not interested in those. The calendar, that wasn't a punchline, it was just a fact. Yeah, I'm sorry, I was trying to move along, yeah. Calendar has to cover at least nine calendar months, ours typically starts in August and ends in June, so that covers 11 months. We have to have 185 days or 1,025 hours, I think nearly every district in the state goes with the hour calculation, because you, you have more flexibility- have more flexibility to build the calendar how you need to in your district. Plus with the mandated start time and the mandated end time, it's hard to get 185 instructional days in and still take breaks for things like Christmas and Easter and Thanksgiving. So we go with 1,025 and always build in extra hours. We have to have at least nine teacher workdays. Two of those teacher workdays have to be designated, we call them optional workdays so that staff who require substitutes can legally take leave on those days. So we have to include at least two of those. We try to include more if we can to give our teachers as much flexibility as we can with using their vacation leave. The calendar has to have 10 annual vacation leave days built in. The legislation basically gives staff 10 days and immediately takes them back. It's something, again, that only legislators could appreciate. They have to have the exact same number of holidays as state employees, and that's 11. We don't get July 4th because it's not part of, during the school year. You cannot have school on Sunday. School cannot be held on Veterans Day or must be held, yeah, must be a vacation or a day off for Veterans Day. It's got to be on the 11th of November or the Friday or Monday closest if it falls in the weekend. And an interesting thing about that, that's the only holiday they specify. We have to give holidays for Christmas and Easter and Thanksgiving, but we could give them in October if we wanted to, but based on legislation, another fun fact. We're not be doing that on this calendar, but I just thought it was interesting. Calendar has to include 215 days, and that's the bottom line here. So we got some consensus from our meetings in October to move to a calendar that the semester ends in December instead of the semester ending in January. For years, the traditional calendar would have you starting, you know, in August, we start for a week, we instruct all fall, we send all the kids home for two weeks and then bring them back to take their exams. Our high school administrators in particular felt like it would really be beneficial to have a semester that ends in December instead of January. For pre-K through grade eight, it's really not, it doesn't matter when the semester ends. They're year-long based schools, elementary, middle school. But for the high school students, we got consensus with all those stakeholder groups I mentioned before that it was the time to move towards a December semester end. So I'm going to just very quickly talk through this calendar and then give you a chance to ask any questions you might have. The August of this calendar looks like any other August we've had for the past probably 10 years since this legislation's been in effect. Some optional workdays to start the year. On that Tuesday, there's a district convocation day, professional learning day, and then the first day of school is on the 26th of August. We have the Labor Day weekend. Our tradition has been to have a half day before big beach weekends like Labor Day and Memorial Day so we can get our buses off the road before the tourists come in. But after the Labor Day holiday, you'll notice we're straight through every day until, you know, through September and October, there's a half day in October for the end of the nine weeks. There is a conference day on November 1st, the required Veterans Day holiday on the 11th, three days at Thanksgiving. Again, that optional workday before the Thanksgiving break gives us an opportunity for staff and for families, students to get out of town for Thanksgiving if that's what they want to do. Then after coming back from Thanksgiving, three solid weeks, and then the semester ends on the 20th. Two-week Christmas break, winter break. The Friday, the 4th is put in, Friday, the 3rd, excuse me, is put in as an optional workday so staff can come in and prepare at the beginning of the next semester. The holiday in January, in February, we have a professional learning day on the 10th and a conference day on the 17th. End of the third, nine weeks in March on the 14th. Spring break has a holiday on Good Friday and a workday after spring break. And again, that's something that our staff have asked for. And by having our semester end in the first semester, we've got some more room in the second semester to put in some workdays like that. So that's, if you don't see any in September and October, you see more of them in the second semester. And then in May, straight through until the holiday with the early dismissal before Memorial Day, and then the last day on the 6th of June with workdays after that. All of this adds up to 215 days. The fixed parts are the 10 leave days and the 11 holidays. So in order to get to 215, it's a matter of how many student days and how many workdays. If you add a student day, you take away a workday and vice versa.
Can you say why 215 is an important number?
It's the law. So.
Thanks, Steve.
And the teacher calendar has to be 215 days. So the first teacher workday in this calendar is the 15th. If you count all of the workdays until June 11th, that has to be 215. So if we, for example, had a weather day and we thought it's too dangerous for anybody to come to work, we're gonna, we're not going to have work that, you know, we're not going to have anything that day. We would have to add a workday at the end of the school year so teachers have a 215-day contract. We don't have a way to make that shorter or longer by legislation. Is that where you're, okay?
Yeah, I heard you say the word contract, that teachers are under contract for 215 days.
And actually, and I wasn't necessarily going to show this, but this is really the best part. So the, over in the far right corner of this, and it's kind of cut off on the edge, but 177 student days, 17 workdays, 11 holidays and 10 leave days equals 215. And that 11 and 10 are fixed. It's the 17 and 177 that can flex a little bit. And since I've got it up, so the first semester is going to be about eight or nine days shorter than we're used to. The second semester is going to be about eight or nine days longer than we're used to, which will give principals at the high school level and counselors an opportunity to really be targeted about how they schedule students. If you need a little more time, if you're not a, if math is not your favorite subject, we might schedule math courses in the second semester so you've got more time to work on that. The other thing that I didn't mention is that the December end for the semester is going to make our scheduling for students who are taking community college courses through CCP a lot, it'll be a lot easier because the semester is going to end at the same time as it does the community college, and the courses will start up at the same time, you know, for the community college. And as we open up an early college, it'll align with that calendar as well. So this move, I think, is particularly timely to move to the December semester. Any questions, comments, things you like, things you don't like, things you wonder about?
Question. Can you explain how virtual days work? When you guys decide that we can go virtual, like, how does that fit?
Correct.
I get that question a lot.
Very good. Yeah, we are allowed by legislation five remote days that can only be used for inclement weather. And those remote days, which by the way, we've used four, four in all the schools, five in Hatteras, so we're already finished, are allowed to be, they're counted as full instructional days. And that's a piece that came in after the pandemic when, you know, remote learning was used. So it gives us five days that we can use for inclement weather that don't count against our hours or they count towards the hours, you would say. We built in, and it's on this, I didn't really talk about it, but this coming calendar has 8.82 days. It's the bottom number on the sheet, built in. So even after those five remote days are done, we'll have some time that if we have to convert a student day to a workday for bad weather, we can do that. We try to convert those to optional workdays so if staff can come in or they can take leave. But that's, yeah, the remotes, it's very specific, only to inclement weather, and they count as full instructional days.
Any other questions from board members? Mr. Blackstock?
Eight days short in the first semester as opposed to second semester, hours in classes, how does, eight days?
It's a lot.
Yeah.
It's a lot. So, so the, go back to this slide. So it's 79 days in the first semester and 98 in the second. So it's, you know, it's again, shorter, a little bit longer. So the difference winds up being about 17 days. There is not a particular legislative requirement for a semester or course in terms of seat time and how many hours it has to be, so we have some flexibility with that. And, you know, like I said before, it's going to take some adjustment at the high school level to, you know, either pace it differently or the first semester, you know, strategically having classes that we can really target for acceleration for students in the second semester, strategically having time where we can take a little more time with students is the design of that. District, a lot of districts have done this. Actually, Ms. Hitch was talking to me about it at our agenda meeting, that, you know, the districts that have done this have seen good academic results, but also good just reviews from parents and students about how that worked.
And Steve, currently, fall semester had how many days?
This past year, I believe it was 86. So it's, this one's, the proposal is 79. So essentially, like I said, we come back from Christmas break and they have a few days and then take their exams, you know? So even though there are more days, there were more days in the semester, the principals believe we lost enough ground in the two weeks of Christmas break that it's probably going to come, it'll work to our advantage, we think.
And like you spoke about a while ago, the scheduling is going to really come into play here. If you've got kids in the fall semester that, for example, are high performing, like Steve said, in math, and they can do the math without a lot of extra time, then you would schedule those students in the fall to take that math course. But you've got students that need some extra help, that need more time, say in a math two class, same class in the fall, same class in spring, you just have more time in the spring to do that. So again, we're going back to that individualized instruction and personalizing what individual students need, not what the class needs as a whole. And that's going to, this is going to allow us to do that across the board. It also, with AP classes in the spring, kids that take the AP class in the spring will take the AP exam in May, and so lead right into it as opposed to taking a fall class and then having to wait to May to take the exam.
I think Mr. Blackstock should present this calendar to the legislature on our behalf.
With the humor.
Exactly.
I wasn't trying to be funny at all.
Well, I can tell you said it more than once. You presented it more than once, I can tell you that.
He really enjoys.
Well, knowing his background as a math teacher, I can see why he just wanted to show off his expertise on that last slide.
And I'll say this too. It's, it's really.
Are there any more questions about the calendar?
It's really moving days around, but there's intent in what's happening. It's not just a matter of counting days and hours. There's a lot of thought that goes into this. The input that we get from our advisories, I can look through this calendar and see all the areas that they said, can we do this? Will that work? And he generally starts off with, we can do anything. I mean, we can't go to school on Sunday and we can't go to school on Veterans Day. Aside from that, we pretty much can do anything. And so it's just a matter of taking the academics behind all those numbers and putting it down to a calendar, and he does a great job doing that.
Well, I just want to say thanks for all the hard work. So we're going to have a motion on the floor to accept the 2024, 2025 school calendar that has been presented to us tonight. Mr. Payne and Ms. Bothwell, first and second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a calendar for 2024, 2025 school year. Thank you all. That concludes our business portion of our meeting tonight. I'd like to now open the floor to our board members and our student advisory, and I'll turn it over to our student advisory first.
Okay. Thank you guys for everything that you do, as always. We've got a lot of good stuff going on and I just appreciate all of the hard work. And I'm excited for the new advisors as well. That excites me too because this was such a great opportunity. And I think it really, and not only has it added to my resume, but I think it was really an opportunity for me to get comfortable speaking in front of a group of, I almost said elders, but you guys aren't. I caught myself, but I gave myself away, but.
You're going to be just fine.
Yeah. So it was really a great opportunity. So thank you for, and you guys are all so kind to us and we all feel so welcome here. So thank you for everything.
Thank you. Mr. Wicker?
I don't have anything.
Ms. Bothwell?
I had one thing I was going to talk about, but now I have a whole bunch. I can't believe all this good stuff that's happening in our schools right now. It is so exciting. The district, College District designation, the Olympiad, I know you are really, really proud of Hatteras, but we all are. I am so proud of you, Isabella. That is the greatest thing in the world for you. You deserve it. I'm excited for Kalida and the chefs. I think that's going to be a really, really fun thing. And then what I was going to talk about is last Thursday, I went and read to Mrs. Nick and Nick's second grade class at Naxet Elementary School. I read Dragons Love Tacos. It was so funny. And the girl, the kids were so hysterical. They started off pretty far back from me as I'm sitting in the rocker and I'm reading it, but I'm showing them the book and then I'm asking them questions. Do you like dragons? Do you like tacos? Do you like salsa? No. Most of them did not like salsa, but they really interacted well. They were really well behaved. And as I kept going through the book, you know, I'd be reading and then I'd look up and the kids were moving closer and closer and closer, and I just thought, they are so enthusiastic and so excited and love reading. It was just a very special day. I would encourage you all to do it.
Thank you. Mr. Payne?
Sorry, I'm going to miss the chefs. My daughter in high school went to half day at the high school, half day at our industrial arts complex and went on to be an executive chef. I'll be out of town Wednesday, but I'm sorry I'm going to miss that because I know it's going to be fun. Once again, I'm going to mention at every meeting, COA, it's free, seniors, parents of seniors, please look into that, save some money, not only for college academics, but for our trades also. There's great opportunities in the trade. So I want to mention that one more time. It's free. Free is good. Thank you.
Ms. Balance?
I'm just so proud of everything that's going on in the schools too, and so I'll leave it at that. I think Susan pretty much hit it all, but yeah, Kate Hatters is kind of knocking it out of the park right now. It is kind of cool. But just to embarrass somebody, just real quick, happy birthday, Barry. You're welcome.
Mr. Woody?
Yeah, proud of everybody, staff and so forth. The only thing that I want to see, so I want to see pictures of that airplane. Where are we at on it? I haven't seen any pictures since they've started and I hear they're. Yeah.
Building the wings, they said.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Well, I'm excited to see something about it. That's all I got.
Okay. As I would say, I'm so proud of our students. It's all the hard work that our staff has put in to help them move that next level, and it shows that they're going that direction. And that's what we're, that's what we're here for, is to make sure that you have the opportunity to go that next level. Our spring break is early this year. It's hard to believe, but the 20, what, the 30th of March will kick it off and the first week of April be our spring break. And I just wish nothing but the best, a relaxing week for our staff. Take that week and spend it with your family, refresh your mind, have a good time with that, and let the students do as well, too, is just relax that week, look forward to coming back. So with that being said, I have a motion on the floor to adjourn.
Motion on the floor to adjourn.
A motion by Ms. Balance. I have a second. Second by Ms. Bothwell. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.